The following is a local resident producer's program. The program contains the sole responsibility of the producer and does not necessarily reflect the views or policies of CATV2, Oshkosh Community Access Television, the City of Oshkosh, the Oshkosh Cable Television Advisory Commission, or Time Warner Cable.
Hello again and welcome everyone to another edition of Eye on Oshkosh. I'm Cheryl Hance along with former Oshkosh Mayor and City Councilwoman Melanie Blackell. On Tuesday, April 6th, voters in the city of Oshkosh will be going to the polls, will be electing people to the Oshkosh Common Council, the Oshkosh School Board, a couple of judicial positions, County Board, as well as answering a couple of referenda questions that will be on the ballot. And on this particular show, we are very pleased to welcome two guests, one in this half hour and one in the next half hour, both who are running for the Oshkosh School Board. There are two seats up for grabs, four candidates are on the ballot, and joining us this half hour is Mr. Bob Bowman.
Thank you for inviting me.
Thank you very much for being here again. And we'll be meeting Don Sween in the second half hour, but during this half hour, welcome back, you were here just before the primary, and congratulations on winning the primary. For someone who may not have seen that show, Bob, why don't you explain to viewers a little bit about who you are and why you're seeking a term on the Oshkosh School Board?
Well, I'm a resident of Oshkosh for over 20 years. I have two children in the educational system, currently students at West. My wife and I have operated businesses in this community. I currently have a small business that operates out of this area in Kenosha. I've been interested in the educational system for years, and a lot of what I've talked about over the years is now finally coming to pass with the advent of standards and assessment, and No Child Left Behind, and I feel it's important to participate in your city government, in your city, and be an active part in the decision-making process, and I'd like to do that.
Speaking of No Child Left Behind, how do you feel about that as a federal program?
I'm kind of dismayed that it took a federal law to finally give the educational system the impetus to make the change it's needed for years. It's a sad state that we have to have a federal mandate to say it's not okay to let a child fail and pass them on. I'm glad to see it come. I think some of the requirements are going to be difficult for districts, but the outcome is we're finally revamping our educational system to fit the needs of the 21st century.
Well, the program, I think, is somewhat failing. As a matter of fact, the entire state of Virginia is looking at pulling out of even complying with that act, because it's just, you know, it seems to just be overly burdensome. It's not working the way I think the government intended for it to work. Do you think that it needs to be tweaked or overhauled somewhat, or do you think that it is working fine the way it is?
Well, I think only time will show. It's inevitable that all federal laws, once they're in place, will have certain adjustments made. I don't think the intent of the federal government was to make it so multiple systems fail and lose funding. I think it was to drive systems to improve and make changes. Oshkosh is not going to have as drastic a change needed as a lot of other areas, because we've been fairly progressive in our educational system over the years. I think we are in fairly good shape with complying. I just think that we have to work a little more fervently at it, and we finally have the impetus to say, it's not a matter of do you want to buy in, the federal law says we have to do it this way, so we are making this change.
Okay. Bob, you did a fantastic job in the primary. I mean, you really, you were just zinging through those polls. Do you have, I know this is a really difficult question to ask a candidate, do you have any idea why you feel as though you did as well as you did in those primaries? I mean, is there, do you think a message that you were trying to get out to the general public through the Oshkosh Public School System resonated, or what was that message, or why do you think you did well?
I think there's a number of reasons. One is the fact that I don't believe in taxing for the sake of taxing, which in Oshkosh is a very popular point of view. I believe in accountability of the system, not just the students, which is also a popular point of view. And on a number of other issues, I differ from the other candidates, and it's imperative when you have a body that makes decisions that you have differing points of view, otherwise all of the facts don't come to light. And whether or not my position is the one that prevails, the questions still need to be asked so that they're answered for the public before a decision is made.
When I was listening to you at the candidates forums and throughout the process prior to the primary, you came across to me as a parent advocate, as someone that would ask the questions that parents would like to ask, but maybe are a little intimidated by the process and the system. They don't want to come across as though they're making waves in the schools so that it's retaliatory or reflective on their children within the system. And that's kind of how you came across to me. Do you, do you think that that's maybe, is that something that you're trying to achieve, or is that just a bonus?
Well, that is just who I am. It's the reason why I fought to get the Concerns Process, which allows people to come forward if they have a concern within the system, and file it anonymously, and still mandate investigation. I do believe that it's important that the system listen to parents and to students, and take their concerns seriously, and actively investigate. I'd like to see the district mandate return phone calls in a finite time period. Right now, they say you're supposed to return a phone call in 24 hours, when possible. That's not practice. I think part of what happens in our system is people feel that the educational system runs on in spite of what they believe or what they need, not in cooperation with the parents and students.
One of the things that has been a real, kind of a barn burner for people in the last several weeks is this new calendar that's been developed for collaboration time for the teachers. Do you have any opinions or positions on this? You saw how the vote came down, I know that you've participated as far as, you know, watching the process develop. Do you have any feelings on this new calendar?
I'm concerned about the reduction in contact hours with students.
The face-to-face time?
Face-to-face time. I also expressed concerns at a recent site council meeting, because in doing this, we eliminated three in-service days, which are teacher training days. We're now down to two, which are half record-keeping, half in-service. My question is, if we sold the change of this calendar and the inconvenience of the parents on the basis that the collaboration time will be used to improve student learning, when are we going to take care of the teacher training and other aspects that are not directly related to student learning that used to be done on the three in-service days that don't exist? And I got answers like, well, we could knock it out in the first 15 minutes. My concern is that we make sure that if we tell parents we're doing this to improve student learning, that the full time spent is devoted to student learning and nothing else. It's unfortunate that we couldn't have arranged this without having it interfere with the school day. It's difficult, because our teachers work 35-hour a week, a lot of other districts work 37 and 1/2. There's a lot more time in a week with 2 and 1/2 more hours to have the necessary face-to-face time and collaborative time. But that's something our district hasn't been able to work out with the teachers' union.
One of the questions that I have for you, Bob, and it's kind of evolves from two things that have just been talked about. You know, the teachers working 30-some hours a week and having phone calls returned in a finite period of time, as you described it. I think a lot of teachers, by and large, are very dedicated individuals, and they do a very good job. I also think that there are some teachers out there who are in it for the money, who are in it for the benefits, and by God, when that final bell rings, they leave. And again, I'm going to qualify this by saying this is not all teachers. I think by and large, the majority of them are doing what they should do, probably going above and beyond, but there are some who, when the bell rings, that's it. They pack up, they go home. And, you know, I've listened to Melanie over the years when her daughter was in school. She could not get a teacher to return a phone call in the evening, because after all, that's the evening and that's their off time. How do you feel about that? And do you feel that teachers should be held to the same standards of returning calls like that?
Well, you have to remember one very important thing, that teachers and the teachers' union are two distinct entities. I would say 99% of our teachers are dedicated, they give 110%. Any field, you're going to have that 1% or 2% that don't. And then you have to look at the fact that there's the teachers' union, which is no different from the Teamsters. Its job is to get as much as possible for its constituents for as little as possible in return. And a lot of times, what teachers do comes from, more from pressure from their own association and fear of problems within the system than because of what they really want to do. There are a lot of teachers that return phone calls at night. There are a number of my Doris teachers, they give you their home number and say, "Call." So I would not say it's the teachers are the problem. I said, what we have to deal with is the fact that when you deal with a union, they're just doing their job, and a union, and their job is to get as much as possible for as little as possible. Teachers' union is no different. So I would have to say teachers in general go out of their way for students.
I have no doubt, but, you know, when, I guess I tend to disagree a little bit with what you just said, that it's the union, because if the majority of teachers are not feeling this pressure, and they are returning the calls and so forth in a pretty timely manner, then I think it's probably more an individual decision to not return phone calls on the part of that 1% or 2% of teachers, or that may even be high, but whatever percentage it may be. I mean, I realize that a district's hands are kind of tied, but the one argument that we always hear from teachers is, we're not overpaid, because, you know, we're doing lesson plans in the evening, we're grading papers in the evening. And I guess, I'm not sure why that small core of teachers will not return phone calls then in the evening.
Well, I don't think it's just the teachers, I'll be honest with you. I have the same problem with administration. And I think part of it comes from the fact that the educational system's attitude for years has been, if we ignore it long enough, it'll go away. Unfortunately for them, I don't go away.
Yeah. I like that.
I'm like, you know, I just keep coming back at them, and I think-
Just like a bad penny, Bob, you keep showing up, huh?
And I think that's part of what we have to do. What we have to avoid is saying that we need to mandate things of people, but as long as there is an adversarial situation that exists between the two groups in our system, it's going to be real hard to get cooperative effort. And I think part of that is communication. I think we have to build a better communication between administration and teachers in particular, because in speaking to teachers, that's one of their biggest complaints, that they don't get return phone calls from their own administration. Well, if the administration won't return teacher phone calls, what is the impetus for teachers to return parent phone calls? I mean, it plays both ways.
Sure, kind of a trickle-down effect.
Yeah.
Bob, there has been a growing number of fees being assessed to parents and students within the Oshkosh Public School System. And one of the things that I'm very concerned about as a taxpayer, although my daughter is no longer in the public school system and just completed that, we have assessed fees from textbooks to just about anything that you can imagine. And yet, we have a school board that's supported adding a tennis court to the North High School area. We have cut teaching positions, we've cut support positions, we're assessing fees on, you know, at a very rapid pace. What is your position on fees and when they're appropriate? And some of these expenditures that seem to fly in the face of fiscal constraints, I mean, we're in deficit situations with the state budget, we're hearing about how, you know, the funding sources may change, and we're going to have to flux with that, and yet we're assessing all these fees, and yet, you know, gee whiz, let's add another tennis court to North High School. Do we have our priorities screwed up, or what's the problem?
I think part of the problem is the influence of the parent over the system and what their priorities are. Athletics is a classic example. There's an upheaval when someone talks about cutting in athletics. But yet, a year ago, we didn't have an advisor for the West math team, so they almost had to drop out of competitions, because there was no one out there as an advocate for them. I think part of what we have to do is go back to the basics of what the charge of a school system is, what they're truly responsible for, which is primary education and teaching children what they need to be productive parts of society, and realize that a lot of the other things are just bonuses that we've been able to do, because for years and years, we had surpluses of money. I asked the district, what it costs us per student to run a lot of our athletic programs, and they don't have it broken down. They don't know what it costs per student for football. Well, how do you know whether you can justify a fee if you don't know what it's costing you per student to run a program?
Or how do you know what to set the fee at?
Exactly. That's where part of the problem comes in, is for a system that claims to be data-driven, when I ask for data, they don't have it. They don't have the numbers I'm looking for.
So is your concern as a candidate and as a parent with children in the system, the balance between academia and athletics? I mean, do you think it's tilted far too much that it's rah rah rah, and we're not giving credit when academia is successful, we're not paying enough attention to the reading, writing, and arithmetic?
What I believe is, everyone needs to pay an appropriate share for things that are not the primary responsibility of the system. Why someone is taking a credit-bearing art course and has to pay a $20 fee for clay and other consumables, but yet someone is taking a non-credit-bearing athletic activity and only pays a $25 or $30 fee for that, when the athletic budget in this district is over $1 million a year?
Is it really? That's what I was going to ask you, is how much do we commit to our athletic programs? And that's all the athletic programs? It's $1 million a year?
That is the middle school, high school sports, and high school intramural sports, because we cut out intramurals at elementary and middle school to save about $27,000. The same year, we charged parents $45,000 in student fees for athletics.
Does that include the extracurricular salaries of teachers who are volleyball coaches or basketball coaches, or whatever they may be?
That is the majority of the cost, and also that includes the actual equipment dedicated to the sport. But what they don't take into account, I believe, is the wear and tear on the facility as a result of the sport. They don't have, return on investment on a basketball floor, what's its lifespan if it's being used six nights a week, you know, between practices, athletic events, and the public, what is the cost of replacing that, what its life expectancy is? That's not built into that cost, I don't believe. That's just actual expenditures on a yearly basis for salaries and materials.
What was last year's public school system's budget, the operational budget for the school system, do you know offhand? I apologize for throwing that at you.
It depends on the number you listen to. Sometimes they talk around $90, $91 million, another time they talk down in the 70s. It depends on how you define the budget.
And that includes salaries, benefits?
Yeah.
Everything rolled up into one?
And one number also includes the rec. department, which is under the auspices of the school district.
Correct.
I believe that also includes debt service.
Okay. Superintendent Ron Heilmann has come up with a 20-year vision plan, and contained within this plan is a proposal that if the numbers are deemed necessary, it would involve closing four of the smaller elementary schools and building, I don't want to call them a supersized school, but it would involve building two larger elementary schools. How do you feel about something like that, Bob?
Well, I would first have to see the cost justification. Are we truly going to save money as a taxpayer by having one larger school than two smaller schools? But the concern that does exist with the small neighborhood schools is, as the federal and state government mandate more and more services for children, when we started with neighborhood schools, those things were not part of their operation. So now we're running into situations where you have space problems, we have service problems. When you have a neighborhood school, you can't service the needs of all the children in that neighborhood at that school, when it's a small school. That's the reason why some of the early childhood had to be bussed, why some of the special needs kids have to be bussed back and forth. So it's a catch-22. Do you find, define a neighborhood school as one that all the kids in the neighborhood could go and get the services, or do you define it as the school that's been there all these years, but only services certain groups of kids within the neighborhood? And I would also have to look at the operational cost of the buildings. Are we going to save enough by going to one large building to offset the cost to the taxpayer of the referendum?
Right. Okay. What kind of relationships, one of the things as an ex-council member that I would always get harked off about is hearing about legislation at a state level that affected city operations, city funding, city revenues, and it was always after the fact. So you were always this reactionary individual, and it was usually, you know, like Chicken Little, oh my God, the sky is falling, because you had so little time to react. What is your philosophy on communication with state legislators? You know, do you expect them to come to school board meetings where 2/3 of the funding is being taken care of by the state? Are you going to have private conversations with them? What is your feeling on those kinds of things?
What I would like to do is get on the mailing list of the state legislators and tell them, anytime there's something being proposed in committee that affects education, I would like to see a copy of it. I mean, before it even gets out of committee, let's see what's being proposed, so we can plan accordingly. And that's one of the reasons why I'm hesitant about committing to tax increases now, because I don't want to commit us to programs that we will have to cut in the near future if the funding formula changes. I would rather make sure that we set up programs that we don't have to pull out from under children, because we can no longer fund them.
Do you think teachers as a whole, if you look at the Oshkosh Public School System, and you've been very, you've praised the public school system as being very forward-thinking, proactive, do you think that teachers are paid well? I mean, do you think it's a good job to be an Oshkosh Public School teacher?
I personally believe it is. I think that for the time they put in and their academic background, they're fairly well compensated. I believe the average teacher salary is in the mid-40s, with a $17,000 to $18,000 benefit package. I think that's comparable, when you start figuring that's on a 38-week year, if you start figuring the average person works 48 weeks, you're talking about a $70,000 compensation. And I don't know many people who work, who make $70,000 and only work a 40-hour week. So I mean, I don't think it's bad. Also, when you talk about starting salaries, there was a recent email that came around before the primary, talking about how people with a four-year degree earn about $33,000 a year to start. Well, that's for a 48- to 50-week year, our teachers started around that with a four-year degree. So I don't think they're doing that bad in relationship to what the wages are in the Valley and what other people with the same background are being compensated for. We can't compare ourselves to what the salaries are in Chicago or, you know, other areas.
Do you support the four-year-old kindergarten?
I'm hesitant about it, because of the fact that when we went to all-day kindergarten, the numbers increased, we started having problems for space and buildings that we had just rebuilt or remodeled, because we didn't have the foresight to allow for that. I think at a time where there's budget crunches all over, to make a commitment to increasing the number of students who are serving, that we don't necessarily have to serve by law, could lead to a problem. And I think it could lead to a cost to the taxpayer that right now, most of them can't afford.
Thank you.
Speaking of boundary lines, that's kind of where I want to go for just a couple of minutes here, if we could. How do you feel, and this is kind of getting into the neighborhood school type issue a little bit too. First of all, does the Oshkosh Public School District have its own definition of what a neighborhood school is?
From what I have heard at board meetings, it's not one they can agree, everyone can agree on. They all have their own perspective.
Everyone has their own definition.
But to give you a definite answer on that, I don't know.
Okay. So that makes it hard, right off the bat then, in trying to redraw boundary lines. But in terms of boundary lines, what do you feel we should do in trying to kind of redistrict the schools that we have right now?
I think it's necessary for our district to come up with a policy in place for how boundaries are changed, when, what's the trigger for when boundaries are changed, and how we change them. And we need to change boundaries in multiple areas at the same time to balance out attendance so that we don't pit one community against the other, which is what's happened in past years. No matter what you do, no matter how you draw a boundary line, somebody's friend who's gone, who lives across the street is going to go to a different school. No matter where you put that boundary, unless you use a physical boundary like a river or a highway, there's no way to make a boundary change that isn't going to create that situation. We have to accept that fact. And we also have to take the emotionality out of it. We have to make it something that's done based on what is in the best interest of students' education, because we have class sizes now that allow us to do what we need to do. We don't have a situation where you have 20 kids in a class at one school and 12 in a class at another. We talk about equity in education, we have to decide what we mean by equity, and I think that's where we have to start.
Okay. What is, what is the charge of the school board? That seems like such a simplistic question, but it seems to get all modeled up in CQI and CQM and all these wonderful things that we like to tagline things with. And you hear a lot of different school board members, and you have in the past, about, well, the school board can't micromanage the administration and the day-to-day running of the school. In your mind, what is the charge of the school board? What will your job be if you're elected?
To review the performance, to hire and fire superintendent, to review the performance of administrators, renew their contracts, to vote on policy, and then at that point, make sure that the policy is enforced. That's the key. It's not micromanaging if you make sure that the policy you voted on is enforced the way it was intended. This district habitually has policies that it doesn't follow through on, and it relinquishes powers to people within the system that they should not have. We allow other people to set practice that borders on policy. So what they need to do is make sure that when they charge the administration with a new policy, that if it comes to their attention that that policy is not being implemented the way they intended, then they react. That's not micromanaging, that's managing. And I think that's where the difference is.
Okay. In the, about the last 45 seconds that we have remaining, Bob, why don't you look into camera three there straight ahead of you and tell voters why they should check a mark by your name on Tuesday, April 6th?
Well, I'm not saying I have all the answers to all the questions, but I can tell you I have a lot of questions, and I'm not afraid to ask them. I think what I will do is make sure that when administration makes a decision, they're held accountable for that decision, and they can justify the decision they make. I will not blindly vote for something without first making sure I have all the facts. I will not hesitate to vote no if I don't believe that it's an appropriate thing to do, even if it's an unpopular position. I think it's important we have people on the board that are willing to stand their ground, voice their opinion, and stand by their own convictions, and I'm willing to do that.
Terrific. Thanks again for being here. Nice job, and congratulations again. Good luck next month. We're going to take a real short two-minute break. When we come back, we'll be joined by another school board candidate, Don Sween. We'll be right back.
Good evening. Follow me, please.
Imagine what America would be like today if Martin Luther King never had a dream. Help keep the dream alive. To find out more about the Martin Luther King Memorial in Washington, DC, call or log on now.
Oshkosh Community Access TV2 is your local sports channel. Follow your favorite Oshkosh teams each week as CATV2 presents the High School Game of the Week. Besides football and basketball, we feature soccer, gymnastics, swimming, wrestling, and volleyball. Sundays at 8, Mondays at noon, and Wednesdays at 8, CATV2 is the place to be for high school sports. The High School Game of the Week, here on Oshkosh Community Access TV2.
I want to have an impact.
Make a difference.
I want my voice to be heard.
I want my voice to be heard.
Take matters into your own hands. Smack down your vote for the candidates who represent you and the issues you care about. Make time on Election Day to vote in elections in your community.
Have an impact.
Make a difference.
Let your voice be heard.
To learn more about the candidates where you live, contact the league in your state or community through LWV.org.
Smack down your vote on Election Day.
The Friends of OCAT is a nonprofit group that supports Oshkosh Community Access Television programming and facilities. The Friends sponsor membership, underwriting, and fundraising projects. Their mission is to provide quality programming, to plan and implement fundraising activities, to develop a supportive membership, and to raise awareness of OCAT. If you would like to become a member and support Oshkosh Community Access Television, buy an OCAT card and enjoy discounts at many local businesses. Thanks for viewing OCAT.
Hello, and welcome back to the second half of Eye on Oshkosh. I'm Cheryl Hens, along with Melanie Bleckel, former Oshkosh mayor and city councilwoman. We just finished talking with Bob Bowman, who's a candidate for the Oshkosh School Board, and we are now very pleased to be joined by Don Sweene, a retired Oshkosh Area School District teacher. You're seeking your first term on the board, correct?
Yes, I am. And thank you for having me this evening.
Well, it's a pleasure to have you and to meet you. Congratulations on a victory in February's primary.
Thank you.
It was kind of a nail-biter, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. But why don't we just start with you telling viewers a little bit about yourself, and why you're seeking a position on the Oshkosh School Board?
Okay. Well, I moved to Oshkosh in 1970, and I started a teaching career at Webster Stanley Middle School. And shortly thereafter, I transferred and taught between Webster Stanley and Merrill Middle Schools. I did that for 10 years. Then, for the last 22 years, I was teaching at Oshkosh West High School, industrial technology, which is woodworking, metalworking, things like that. My wife and I have two children. They're both graduates of the Oshkosh Area School System. And I'm kind of active in the community. I'm on the ARC, Winnebago County Disabilities Board. I'm the president treasurer, have been a past president. And I've been involved with Fox Valley Technical College Advisory Boards, and a few of those types of things.
Okay. Well, you know, we didn't have a chance to talk to you, unfortunately, before the primary. We did invite you, and the scheduling, we just couldn't work it out.
Right.
And so I'm glad that you're here this time. Obviously, you're no doubt aware that, you know, the school district just had a horrible time, as did the city council and the county board, trying to balance a budget this last year. In principle, I guess, you know, do you agree with the decisions that they made, and why? And if not, what would you have done differently?
At this point, I think I do agree with the decisions they made. I think, you know, some of the cuts they made, you know, obviously, it would have been nice if they wouldn't have had to make any cuts or anything like that. But in light of what's happened, that's passed, and I think at this point, we have to press on, and hopefully, we can, you know, figure out some way, so we don't cut any more programs and things like that.
With, I mean, shared revenues are going to be cut again come next year, and that's going to create even more problems for every type of government body. Cuts will probably have to come. What would you advocate cutting, if, in fact, that is the case?
That's a real good question.
Thank you.
At this point, I'm not quite sure. I think that the Oshkosh Area School District has cut very thin already. I was at a meeting today, and the one person was talking about cuts that their district had to make, and one of them was Russian. Russian, you know, is a modern language. And we don't even have programs like that to cut. I think we've already cut as soon as we can go. And if I am elected to the board, I would certainly, you know, take a real good look at all the programs that are out there, look at different avenues, different places to possibly make some cuts, and go from there.
With two-thirds of the funding coming from the state, and then, of course, you know, you have this banter back and forth, "Well, maybe we shouldn't do two-thirds funding, maybe we should put it back on the property taxes," all this kind of stuff. What kind of relationship do you think either you have, or could develop, with state legislators? As far as opening those lines of communication, the school has experienced much as the same as the city and county, with conversations coming so late in budgetary sessions about legislation that will affect schools, cities, counties, that you're always reacting, you know, and it's always at the 11th hour. And it's not conducive to being a good planner and being proactive. Do you think that those relationships are important? And do you think that you can, being a new school member, if you're indeed elected, can you foster better relationships? Will you demand that legislators show up and start participating in your budgets?
I would hope that I could foster some relationships, relationships somewhere along the line. I think it's very important that we, as board members, if I'm elected, stay on top of the situation and get to understand what's happening, and know what's happening before it happens, so that you get a little bit of a pulse of what's going on down there. And consequently, you would want your congresspeople and assembly people to be in touch with each one of us individually, and send us the information, so that we can, you know, do appropriate planning or appropriate interventions, so that we can, you know, maybe shed some light, so that they can make wiser decisions in Madison. You know, the budget situations are very, very tough, and there's been some talk about property freezes and things like that. If that happens, not only the school system, but the entire community is going to be in real bad shape, as far as protective services and services that are offered by the city.
I'm glad you mentioned the feds, because I have a tendency to beat up on the state officials on a regular basis, because I've just had so much more experience with that. But you're absolutely right. The feds play a big part in the Oshkosh Public School System, because you are, you're looking for funding for your special needs students, and that funding has been significantly cut, even in this last budget. You went from, I don't have the exact numbers, but I'm going to throw this out, about 60-plus percent in federal funding for your special ed's and special programming, and you're now down to like 31% or 32% of federal funding. So you're absolutely right. We do have to expect more from the federal government and our congressional leadership, not just state. One of the questions, and you know this, being a former teacher, retired teacher, there's a lot of concerns about a guy like you sitting on the school board. It's kind of like the fox guarding the hen house, is kind of how people are going to view that. And, you know, I think that you've been pretty good about, you know, taking that in stride. But I think that you know that that perception is out there.
Yes.
How do you feel, as a retired teacher, who has worked in the school system as long as you have, how do you feel about QEO? And that's the Qualified Equal-
Economic.
Economic offer. I can't even say it, more or less understand it. How do you feel about that? Do you think it's a fair process? Should it be eliminated?
That's, it's kind of an unfair question, but I really do feel it should be eliminated. I think the Qualified Economic Offers has really zeroed in on the teachers, as far as fair negotiations and things like that, they're dictated to. On the other hand, if the QEO is eliminated, there has to be another checks and balances in there, whether it's binding arbitration or arbitrators, something to protect the taxpayers, so that, you know, the salaries and things, the costs, don't skyrocket and go completely out of control. But I do believe that the QEO law is a law that was really kind of unjust to the teachers, you know, because they were the only ones in the entire state that were affected by the QEO.
When you talk about checks and balances, if QEO, if you had your way, would be eliminated, binding arbitration is not beneficial to usually, it's either beneficial to one side, or it's the other side. There is no middle ground that is found in those kinds of negotiations. It's either you get the gold package, or you get the frugal package. You don't get the kind of bronzy, maybe, thing in the middle. How does that benefit the taxpayers of the community?
To be honest with you, I don't know that it really does benefit the taxpayers of the community, but it really forces the, both sides, to go to the table and negotiate fairly. I mean, not fairly, but to negotiate, and to try to come up with a suitable package for both people. I don't believe that the teachers, you know, would probably ask for the sky, and hopefully the board wouldn't say, "We're going to take the sky away from you." But I do believe that, you know, it would force the folks to negotiate fairly. In the last few years that the QEO was in, I was involved with, you know, being a teacher, and it was really frustrating, because it seemed like, you know, the Board of Education really didn't have to negotiate. I mean, they could just say, "Okay, that's fine, fine, fine," and then just say, "Well, we're going to impose a QEO." And, you know, the QEO wasn't, I mean, it's not good. I mean, it's not a fair tool, but it's not totally bad either. But I'd like to see the Board of Education get back to negotiating with the OEA, and start bringing some harmony. I think there's a great deal of animosity between, you know, the board. It's kind of like the board's here, and the teachers are over here, and not only the teachers, but the custodians, and the aides, and all those folks over here, and it's, they need to get together and communicate. And that's one of the things I would hope that I could foster, is more communication between both sides, so that we get a good working relation, rather than us against them. And once everybody knows the facts, it's a lot easier to get a give-and-take situation, rather than a take-take, or, you know.
Give-give.
Yeah. I don't think that an acrimonious, you know, situation between the teachers and the board, or the janitors and the board, for that matter, is, I don't think that's unique to here. You know, I cover government agencies in different communities, and it's the same all over. You constantly have school boards that are battling the teachers and that kind of thing. And I'm not sure what the answer is. Obviously, we have the QEO in this state. What do they do in other states that you think might work here, if we did eliminate the QEO?
I would be very honest, I'm not quite sure what they have done in other states. I've pretty much concentrated on what's happened in Wisconsin. But going back to your statement about the bickering back and forth between the unions or organizations and the Board of Education, there are districts that, you know, will sit down and negotiate contracts that are fair to both sides. And I think that's what I would like to see happen in Oshkosh here, get down to things that are fair to both sides. I mean, we don't, I know the teachers don't want to, you know, take, 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 take from the taxpayers, because they themselves are taxpayers, and the normal taxpayers certainly don't want to keep giving in. The teachers don't want to keep giving either. And so consequently, I think the key to a lot of this is communication. I think the lines of communication have to be opened up. I think the board has to get involved, and go to the schools, and see what's happening, and address the issues from that standpoint.
Sure. A short time ago, we were talking about, you know, federal-type things. Certainly, one of the most aggressive and probably controversial things that has come down the pike during the Bush administration, and you're shaking your head, I know that you know where this is going, is the No Child Left Behind Act. And, you know, what are your thoughts on that, as a potential school board member?
To be quite honest, the No Child Left Behind Act scares me. As a citizen of Oshkosh, I worry about it. I think there are some things in there that are going to be harmful, but there are certainly a lot of good things that are along in there. But one of the problems, as I see, is that the at-risk students are going to be the sufferers kind of of that, simply because they're the ones that need some special assistance and guidance to get their scores up. And, you know, and since the testing is going to take place, why, it's going to be testing all the students, not just the, you know, the average or the regular-ed students. And the cost on some of that stuff is going to be, fall on the school board also, I do believe.
So in concept, in theory, you like the concept, but it probably, if I'm hearing you right, needs to be tweaked?
I think it needs to be tweaked, yes, very much so. I think, you know, it's good to have lofty goals and high standards and things like that, but I don't think it's necessary to have standards and goals that are unattainable. And I do believe that some of the things with the No Child Left Behind Act are going to be very, very difficult to achieve. Although, Wisconsin and Oshkosh, you know, we do have a fine educational service here, and our scores are above average in lots of areas and things like that. So we're not, you know, we're not going to be caught behind the eight ball like some of the country, or not countries, but some of the states that have poorer education systems. But it does scare me. It really does.
Okay, thank you.
I want to go back just for a moment, because Cheryl had jumped in here, and when I originally asked you about the QEO question, you said that you thought that that was an unfair question that I asked you. Can you qualify that? Is it just because you were a teacher, and you felt that that puts you in a difficult spot?
Yeah, it's just because-
You know that you will be asked these questions as a school board member.
Yes, I do, and I understand that. And, yeah, it's tough to answer those questions, because obviously, when I was a teacher, I felt like I was being picked out of a group. I mean, you're a school teacher, and you can't negotiate, and it's, you know, I mean, you can negotiate, but you can't negotiate past a certain point, and, you know, so it's kind of like, which made me feel a little bit uncomfortable.
Okay. When, you also talked about that you felt QEO was unfair, and that some of the negotiations were rather unfair. I'm trying to understand, because I'm trying to understand from a teacher's perspective, what you find in these negotiations, or in the process that's presently set up, unfair? Is it teachers' hours? Is it their pay? Is it their benefits? Is it, what, do you feel teachers are being compensated fairly for the work that they do? Or, I guess I'm trying to understand what teachers are feeling is unfair.
I guess what I felt was unfair was just the fact that we didn't have the opportunity to negotiate fairly, you know, to have a fair negotiations. It was already dictated what the end result would be. I mean, unless the board went higher, or we went lower. But the end result was negotiated. As for conditions of the contract and things like that, I certainly never felt that it was unfair. I always felt like I was being treated fairly by the Oshkosh school system. I was, I liked my job a lot, I really did. And the reason I retired was because the timing was right. So it's not those things. And I don't think other teachers feel that way, either. It's just the feeling like you've been picked out of a crowd, and, okay, you can't negotiate for your contract, you do, but you really can't. And if, you know, things go haywire, then we're going to be dictated to what happens. And I think that's where it came in. It's not from the standpoint that, you know, we got long hours, or short hours, or however it goes.
Okay. There are some, in our last segment, Bob Bowman stated that he felt as though, if he was articulating numbers correctly, that the last year's school budget was $91 million. Would you concur that that is an accurate number?
I think that's right in there. I, to be honest with you, I'm not 100% certain what the actual amount is.
That's a lot of money.
Yes, it is.
That's a lot of money. And a good majority of that is dedicated, about a million dollars, I shouldn't say a good majority, about a million dollars, according to Bob, is dedicated to our athletic programs. Do you think that there's a lack of balance between academia and athletics? Are we putting too much impetus on athletics? If we have to cut programs, should we be cutting core services and core teachers? Or do we need to be cutting in athletics?
At one point, I would have said, "Let's cut athletics." At this particular point in time, I think athletics are important. I think it develops character, it brings kids together to communicate and talk like that. And if you're looking at a million dollars, there's an awful lot of students that are participating in sports through the middle school programs and the high school programs. And I think we're getting a pretty good bang for our buck. And not only that, it really brings the community together. I mean, right now, Oshkosh West has a very, very good basketball team, both the boys and the girls, and you're going to see the entire community bond together with that and pull together. And I think that's really important for a community of Oshkosh's size. And so consequently, even though a million dollars is an awful lot of money, I don't think that we're, you know, overspending there. As for cutting programs versus athletics, I would try to do everything possible to maintain programs, and I would also do everything possible to try to maintain the athletic programs that are, you know.
Kind of a balancing act. It's always going to be a balancing act.
Yes, it is.
One of the things that came up, and this was, what, two years ago already? Oshkosh West mascot, hot topic, yai! Would you have supported eliminating the mascot? And I know, now, honestly, if that was an unfair question, that really was an unfair question. But it-
I will answer that.
It gives people some insights as to your thought processes, and how these kinds of things, because those things- kinds of things, because those things are going to come up again.
This is probably going to hurt me a great deal. I was on the Oshkosh State Council when that topic came up, and we had student representatives on the Oshkosh State Council at the time, and they expressed their views very eloquently, I guess I should say, is that, right now, they, or right then, they had the Oshkosh West Indian as a mascot, but they couldn't do anything with it. When we went to the state tournament that year, they said, "You can't do the, you know, the Indian shop. You can't wear the headdress down here. You can't basically do any of those types of things." So in reality, Oshkosh West was the Oshkosh Indians, but the students had nothing to rally behind and rally around. And so consequently, and this is probably going to hurt me, consequently, I did support the changing of the logo, not because I wanted to succumb to the pressures of, you know, the folks that were pushing this, but I voted to change it for the students that were there and going to come back or continue to be there, so that they would have a mascot that they could rally around and be proud of. And consequently, the rest, you know, the rest is kind of history. We changed the, or the Oshkosh West changed to Wildcats. And, you know.
Okay. That's fair enough.
And to be quite honest with you, I do believe the kids adapted a whole lot better than a lot of the-
I think our soldier folks had a little more trouble with them.
Yeah. And that's understandable. And, you know, it's, well-
I think sometimes we get too carried away with political correctness, and we just forget about common sense. But one last question, and then I'm going to let Cheryl go right ahead. Some of the things that are going on in the schools or being talked about in the schools, like four-year-old kindergarten. Don, do you support four-year-old kindergarten?
I don't believe I can support that. I would agree with what Bob said. I heard what he had to say in regards to, we went to an all-day kindergarten, it took up a lot of space, and consequently, there are some schools that are suffering from some space issues, along with the Sage program. And consequently, a four-year-old kindergarten, I just don't think I could support that at all.
Well, that's good news, because, I mean, these are just wee pups. I don't, you know, like I said, I was joking around before. I said, "Short of taking them from the womb, I mean, they've got to be children at some point."
Well, at one point, I had made the comment that, I never went to kindergarten. We didn't have kindergarten in a small town I grew up with, and I survived, and my parents survived and everything else. And I, you know, all-day kindergarten for five-year-olds, I think that's, that's enough. I don't think that four-year-olds can do that, you know, maybe one or two days in a daycare or something like that, or early, or some kind of a children's program that they have would be fine.
Okay.
Not for the school system.
There's, there's been a lot of talk of late about neighborhood schools, redrawing the boundary lines and so forth. What is your, Don Sweene's definition of a neighborhood school?
Don Sweene's definition of a neighborhood school is real simple. I think it's a melting pot for neighborhoods to get together, to have a common, common entity in their neighborhood. And I think neighborhood schools should continue, to the point where it's feasible. I mean, when all of a sudden, why, the enrollments go down, so that we can't provide services at that school or something like that, then look at boundary changes possibly, or closing the school or whatever. But I'm not in favor of the large elementaries. I, I don't think those are, I don't think that's for Oshkosh, to be quite honest with you. I think the neighborhood schools are the, the nice way to go.
Large elementary is like something that is being proposed in Dr. Heilmann's 20-year vision plan? Is that what you're referring to?
I would say something along those lines, yeah. I just, I, I'm really in favor of neighborhood schools. I, when I was going to school, I came from a small town, but we had rural neighborhood-type schools. And the bonding and things that went on and the activities that happened around those, and the parents getting to know each other, and the kids getting to know each other and play with each other and things like that. It's not to say it couldn't happen in a larger school, but sometimes you get, the kids get lost in, in the, all the kids running around and all this type of thing. So.
One real, very quick question that I have for you, Don, is that, under Karen Bowen's presidency, when she was on the school board, a lot of people seem to have a problem with, you know, these, these very strict time constraints, egg timer-type time constraints. One of the things that we have heard consistently is that, under Dennis McHugh's presidency on the board, you know, they're, the board is at least responding to citizens and parents when they come up and talk. What is your feeling on that? Is that something that should be, you know, fostered and continued? Or would you like to go back to the old way?
I, I'm not saying the old way is good, but I think when, when parents and people in the community show enough interest to come to a school board meeting, and they want to come up and, and speak, they should not be put on a timer. They should be told that, you know, "We're going to give you approximately three minutes, and if it goes four or five minutes, that would be fine." I, I just personally had a problem with a timer, you know. The first time I, I heard that, and I'm sorry, Karen, but the first time I saw that or heard it on TV, it was like, "What is that noise?" I was looking around to see if something in my kitchen was going off.
Ding! Yeah. It's like there was a bomb somewhere, right?
But, but there should be some form of, you know, something to, to keep it short, so that we don't-
Sure.
-reiterate over and over again.
Sure.
But yet, at the same time, not be so callous to say, "Okay, your time's up," and stuff like that.
And, and what about, you know, the board actually interacting with parents who are coming up to speak, or any citizen for that matter?
I think that's important. I think that, you know, board members should have an opportunity to respond to a few things. I mean, sometimes it, some of the things that parents are going, or people are going to come up are going to be redundant, and it's going to be over and over. But I think once in a while, that an appropriate response to them would be okay. I, I think that's part of the communication. And I, I really believe that there's a great deal of communication lacking on the school board or in the school board presently and in the whole, the whole system. I think there needs to be more communication, and if that helps it, I think that would be great.
Okay. We have one minute left, so why don't you take about 30 or 45 seconds and look at the camera three, wave to mom and dad, or the kids, or the wife.
I'm here to mom.
And tell folks why they should vote for you next month.
Well, I guess, I would like you to vote for me for a couple of reasons. I, I feel that I know the Oshkosh Area School System quite well. Contrary to what people have said, I, I guess I am an insider, but I don't feel like I'm that type of an insider that's going to damage my effectiveness on the school board. And I would really like to strive for more communication. I think that school board members need to get out and communicate with the public. They need to communicate with their staff, with the administration, with the custodians and teachers. Get in the buildings and find out exactly what's going on.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. And thank you for joining us. Remember to go vote on Tuesday, April 6. That's it. We're out of time. Thank you again. We'll see you next time. Until then, keep your eye on us. We've got our eye on Oshkosh. Take care.